The zoning board meeting on Wednesday, February 22nd. And we'll start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And consider the Republic of which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20S, this meeting being recorded. Just a note before we get started. I attended my resignation a couple of weeks ago. However, it has not been accepted yet, so I am still allowed to chair and vote on hearings. So, having that said, the first order of business is 217Z Tickle Road, which is almost impossible Petition of John Faran, applicant, and Rebecca Collins owner for finding that the demolition of current structure and new construction of a two-story, single-family dwelling containing 2,108 feet square feet shall not be substantially more detrimental than existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood as mandated by zoning by law, Article 5, Section 523. The subject property is located at 217Z Tickle Road, Westport, Mass., and is shown on assessor's map, 21A lots 35 and 45. Now, the way we run this hearing is I'll ask the petitioner to come up and provide whatever information is pertinent to this petition. The members of the board will then ask questions of the petitioner or the petition's representative. Once the board has completed our discussion, then I'll open it up to the general public for comment. Once that is done, then we will close the hearing. By closing the hearing, all that means is that we take no more information. We will deliberate and make a decision. Now, one thing I need to advise everybody is the bylaw says substantially, not substantially more detrimental than existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. According to town council, what that refers primarily to is things like public safety and traffic and something substantial like that. It does not refer to architectural issues, style of the house, that kind of thing.
Flapping views.
It's, you know, it's, like I said, it has to do with safety, traffic, you know, something substantial. So, having said that, Representative of 217Z Tickle Road, you can come up and sit here and provide us your... By the way, was there... Let's see if this is the one. Okay, I'm going to read first a letter from Ralph Souza, the building commissioner. This office has received and reviewed the building permit application to demolish and remove the existing single-family dwelling at 217Z Tickle Road. The Westport zoning bylaw, Article 523, alternate sites, pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be altered, providing there is a finding by the Board of Appeals that such an alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. Excuse me. Therefore, the building permit application is denied. I will need to know what the proposed structure will look like versus the present structure. Site plan did not accompany this application. I will need to verify the property. That is a letter from the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer, and that's what prompted you to come in front of us and requesting this. Now, voting on this particular petition will be the members you see here. Cynthia Kozekowicz, Barbara Pudalil, myself, Roger Menard, Konstantski, and Ray Elias. For a finding, it is a majority vote, so you need three members to approve. So, having said, yours.
Hi, I'm John Faran of Ironwood Studio. Rebecca Collins, homeowner. So Rebecca came to us about a year ago almost. They purchased the house last spring, wanted to do some remodeling, make it livable.
Can I just...
Yeah.
Your application, is that your signature?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we do require that the owner actually sign, but...
Yeah, it was a...
I signed a lot.
Ah, it could be a lawyer, right?
But we're a doctor.
Yeah, I don't make that much money.
I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem. So, we looked at the house, and it didn't take long to realize that there was a lot... The house is going to take a lot more money to actually fix up than to knock down. I don't know if you guys... Maria had mentioned that sometimes you guys go by the house to take a look at it before the hearings.
Yes.
I don't know if you guys did. I brought some pictures along to show you.
Good, because I tried to. I looked at O and P and Q and R and S.
Yeah, so this is the house now. All four sides. Pass that around. I took pictures of... One of the biggest things is the floor, on the first floor. The house is on piers, not like piers you'd see on a beachfront home, more like deck piers. So, I think that's what caused a lot of the problem. So, this is from underneath the house. You can see the house has been... The framing's been scabbed, added to, supported with like little braces here, cinder blocks here and there. It was a little scary looking. This is my best... This is my favorite one here, is the floor inside. Yeah. So, this is what it looks like on the inside of the floor. I also have this photo here. Shows like the front of the house, the walls about almost two and three quarters inch out of level and six feet. So, I don't know. Between that and all the walls being out of level, trying to get it to work, put in, you know, install in a door that works in the front would be impossible on a wall like that. To fix the floors, you'd have to tear the whole floor system right out. The walls are sitting on the floor system. You know, you know where I'm going.
What is this thing actually? These beams aren't sitting on anything.
Yeah, it's a little scary over there.
Wow.
Then lastly, I just have some photos of the inside, just showing how it's not, you know, kind of a lot of them are still in rough framing.
You could pay a rollerball in here, that would be good.
So, that's just to show you what the conditions are making there now.
Yep.
What, sorry, Chris made my bag down there.
Okay, so you plan us to demolish...
The plan is proposing to knock it down and build a new home.
And it appears that the new home is going to be a little bit bigger than the old one?
A little bit bigger. Square footage is bigger.
It looks like you didn't manage to keep it all within zoning setbacks.
Yes, everything's within setbacks. We have the boards.
This one's the good one. And this is a caftican, this is on the river.
So, yeah, so the setbacks were within... We have 10 feet three on the right, 10 foot four on the left, which I believe is eight foot.
10 foot's a requirement.
10 foot's a requirement, yeah. So, it's close, but yeah, we have, we're within requirements.
And from the front, you have...
Front, we have...
45?
Yeah, 45. Existing is 55. Back, we have... It's, the back kind of jogs out, so there's two different areas, but the closest one, we have 24 feet. And I think the setback requirement was six, if I'm not mistaken. Good there. The, we're proposing same thing, two-bedroom, we're just adding a bath. Existing is one bath, adding two.
And you're not moving closer to the river? It doesn't look like you're...
No, no.
It's a pond, right?
It's a pond, yes.
Pond, I'm sorry, yeah. For water.
So, you can fish right from your backyard, right?
Yeah, keep the fish in the pond, but...
Yeah. Just wait till August and they'll just kind of float right over to you.
So, we actually pushed the house forward. The deck, the back of the deck lines up with the back of the house now.
And what is the present square footage of the house before it gets knocked down?
The existing is 1,043. That's what the Zillow or whatever it calls it. I did my own measurement, it was like 1285, so it's a little bit more.
Is this, is this in a flood zone?
I believe it's not.
It's a pond. It's titled, but I mean, I don't think it...
Is it titled?
I mean, it did move.
Is it titled?
It, there is title. Len Potter went through conservation last week, and they have an order of conditions that they're sending to us, but the septic and the site plan were approved pending the order of conditions, which I don't, I have, were not received yet.
Okay.
And one of those things was across, to keep the crawl space and not make it a full basement, so that in the case of a flood, that you'd be a butters, you don't...
Make their house water.
Yeah, I figure out what how, yeah, yeah. That was, that was the one major thing that Len and I had discussed. The three sides around the house on the water side are, it's a step foundation, so they're all wood-framed, so in case, and there's like a bulkhead door, so in case there was an issue that water could actually enter the crawl space, so you're not adversely affecting the neighbors.
Have these plans been, you given to the building inspector?
Not yet. I had done, I first thought of the demo permit, and that's when this came up.
Okay. Because if you're not sure that it's a, whether it's in a flood zone or not, then he may require you to do, to put it on stilts. I have no idea if that's, that's what the, you know, that's a requirement if you're, if you're in a flood zone.
Speak of the devil. Len Potter just came in.
But that wouldn't necessarily affect our, our part of this, because we're only here to determine a finding of what you plan on doing. Is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? You're still going to have to go through the building department, conservation department, the health department, you know, all those other departments.
It makes all the sense in the world to me, I mean, looking at the structure as it is now, if it's not really livable.
God only knows what the septic is right now, it didn't look like it's accessible.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that in itself is a big plus.
Yeah, that's kind of what I generally say is it's a, it's in desperate need of a paint job.
I was hoping.
It's not her plans to knock this down.
Yes, right, yeah. This isn't going to be your $10,000 job. This is going to be...
So, this is a big job.
This is a big job. Now, is this going to be a, is this just going to be a summer home?
This is just going to be a summer home. I reside in Fall River, but I actually own a construction company, so the summer's a little busy. So, when I was a kid, we'd do day trips, because, so the intention would be to utilize this with the kids in the summer until we got to the point where...
But it's going to be a four-season house?
Uh, yes, yes, yeah.
Right. So, eventually, somebody, somebody could, somebody could live there.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Right. Yes, you own a construction company?
Yes.
How are you going to get all that equipment down there?
I'm not going to.
How are you going to get all your equipment down there?
I'm a commercial consultant.
Yeah, we had people drive to make sure it fits.
Did you have to? Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty tight.
Yeah, there's a couple of tuck-ins there.
That's a tight road. The, it's, it said two stories, but it's actually, well, it's, I guess it is a full two stories.
Two bedrooms, so...
Yeah.
It says.
The ceiling height's low, it's like seven foot right now.
I mean, there's a, like, there's a piece of it where the angle of the roof, I imagine, it's a, it gets to be a little lower than, than normal on the, what would that be, the...
The back of the existing?
Which is front and which is back?
On the...
The pitch of the, the pitch of the roof.
Pitch, um...
Four by four, so that's three degrees, I don't know.
It's a 12'4 pitch.
Yeah.
So, yeah, four pitch. Yep.
So, if you look at that second floor, floor plan, you can see there's a dashed line, and that's the pitch that there will be...
The angle starting from the flat.
Right, so you can see where the second finished ceiling is towards the, is that the front or the back? That's going to be, that's the front?
The front is the shorter.
It's the shorter, right. So, part of the front will be...
I have a five or five.
Yeah, a shallow ceiling.
Yeah.
Or you'll put a wall there or something, whatever.
We'll probably use it for storage.
Storage, right, right, right. Give you a good, it'll give you, I mean, some good views of the pond. Sure you have good views of the pond. The things that we, you know, we would generally look at here is making sure that it fits on the, on the property, make sure that you're not violating any other zoning restrictions, which you, which you aren't. Obviously, this is going to be improvement to the neighborhood from what the pictures you show us are there. Guys got any other, any questions at...
I didn't see a site plan parking. Is there a parking issue?
Uh, no, so the, we own the property across, across the lane.
Right.
So, that's what, what we will utilize to park the cars.
Right, they own 35 and...
There's a, it was a site plan, it just wasn't completed when you first handed it in permit.
The only way you could find it was going on the, the town GIS system, actually. You can see it, and I can see that you've got your two, the two lots.
Yeah.
And the other, the other side is actually quite a bit larger.
Kind of shows there's a lot in there. Close the lane, sorry.
And those two are merged, so they're all just all together?
Yes, so, yeah.
Right here?
Yes, very close to the street, so just all the property down here.
Oh, that's good. Does anybody else want to see this?
It's not good for me, so...
It's hard to tell. They don't really identify the lots. If they had the GIS, it would, but anyway.
We have that miniature here.
Yeah.
It's a miniature.
Yeah.
Cross the septic, it looks like.
Yeah. The tiny thing here.
Yeah.
No other, no other questions?
I don't.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody comments, questions, like it, don't like it, don't care? Okay, I'm good. If there are no other, if there are no other comments, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
The house that's being torn down...
Come to the, you're going to come to the microphone and just identify your name and address.
The house that's being torn down, has it been in asbestos?
Excuse me, could you identify your name and address first?
My name's Kathy Denault. I'm at 217Y Tickle Road.
Okay.
The house that's being torn down...
Is there asbestos? Good question.
There was an asbestos inspection, none was found. There was also a pest control inspection, none was found.
Oh, that's good, too. Okay.
Good, thank you. Okay, we have a motion?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Like a chose unanimous? Okay, anyone want to start this off?
I don't have any problems with this.
No, I mean, I, we, you know, we do get a significant number of these, because Westport is a, is an old town, and a lot of our property were, had been, you know, cottages for a long time, and are being replaced with permanent homes. So, this is something that we see quite often, and it is generally an improvement to the neighborhood. I mean, you're knocking down something that's been there for, you know, 50, 60 years, and wasn't made as a, you know, as a functioning house. They were mostly just summer cottages. So, I think this will be, you know, a boon to the neighborhood as far as aesthetically, even though that's not really our purpose here. I don't see that, that it is going to have an effect on, on safety or on traffic, because right now, you're not even planning on living there. And at best, it's two bedrooms, so it's not going to, you know, it shouldn't, it should not be a hazard. At least, that's my, that's my thought, anyway.
Good project.
Fits the property.
And that's another neighborhood that's changing. We can see that. I have no problem with this.
Okay. No questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to find the 217Z Tickle Road for a finding that the demolition of the current structure and new construction of a two-story, single-family dwelling containing 2,108 square feet shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood as mandated by zoning by law, Article 5, Section 523.
Well done, Konstantski.
I'll second that one.
The only thing I would add to that is that is in accordance with the plans provided today. So, if you make any substantial changes to the plans, then that abrogates this agreement. You have to abide by these plans.
Okay.
Mark that, the plans are marked. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Cynthia, you going to vote?
Oh, aye.
Thank you.
I forget. I'm not used to it.
It's unanimous, so, yeah, thank you very much for attending, and good luck with your project.
Good luck. Would you like these back? Because then you have them for...
I actually have so many copies, but if I need to get rid of them, I'll take them, but...
When do you think you're going to do this?
Hopefully...
Oh, by the way, it is, there is a 20-day appeal process, so you have to, don't knock it down for 20 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Take care.
Okay, the second, the second matter for the evening is a petition by... Okay, I don't know how to... Dom Corrick for a finding that the demolition of an existing nonconforming structure and new construction of a single-family dwelling in compliance with setback and flood zone requirements shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood as mandated by zoning by law, Article 5, Section 523. Subject property is located at 2 Atlantic Avenue, Westport, Mass., and shown on assessor's map, 88 lots 143. Can we move out of the hallway, please? Thank you. So, again, same process as before. I'll have representative from, from the petitioner come forward. You'll discuss your plans. We'll ask questions, and then we'll open up the public. Once again, it will be the same people voting. Cynthia Kozekowicz, Barbara Pudalil, myself, Roger Menard, Konstantski, and Ray Elias. And it will require a majority vote. So, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening. For purposes of the record, my name's Peter Solino. I'm a lawyer at 550 Locust Street in Fall River. I represent the applicant. The applicant is Dr. and Mrs. Dom Corrick, who are here in the second row. They are owners of the property located at 2 Atlantic Avenue here in Westport. Our intent this evening is for me to present the substance of the petition or application before you, and then the technical explanation is going to be given by either Andrew DiGiammo or Len Potter, who are the engineer and architect on the property. Conceptually, what's happening here is my client's purchased this property in September of 2012. Dr. Corrick has had a successful career as a neurosurgeon in North Carolina. He is originally from here, specifically Portsmouth, Rhode Island. His wife, Beth, is also from here, and her parents live on Brayden Point Road. Unfortunately, Dr. Corrick has received a diagnosis, diagnosis as Parkinson's. His father suffered from Parkinson's, and he sees the writing on the wall. So, really, the thrust behind the style of the home, the elevator, the size of the doorways is all in contemplation of him being in a wheelchair. And we believe that to be a strong possibility, which is why the proposal's coming forward. So, as you know, pursuant to your bylaw, 523, we have to come before you to seek this finding, that you find that our proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what's already there to the existing neighborhood. And so, to be clear, the ask here is to demolish the existing nonconforming structure, to reconstruct a dwelling on the lot that meets zoning setback requirements in that zoning district in Westport, and further complies with the flood zone requirements of that district. And if we can do that in a manner that satisfies you, then obviously, we have to go through all the other processes that the chairman had indicated. So, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. DiGiammo with Compass Group Architects. He's going to go over the technical specifications of the house, elevator, dimensions, et cetera. And I'll be here to answer.
I didn't notice it in your package. I assume you got a letter from Ralph Souza rejecting your original plan. Okay.
I wouldn't have had the pleasure of speaking to Ray.
Who is now the zoning board administrator.
Is that a good thing?
That's a good thing.
Very good, thanks.
I don't know. If you did...
Okay. Well, ultimately, if it's appropriate, I can supplement with that.
I just usually read it into record.
Okay. There is one I received.
Yeah. Okay. I'll yield to Mr. DiGiammo.
Hi, for the record, my name is Andrew DiGiammo, from Fall Causeway Road, Minnesota, Massachusetts. I was hired by Dr. and Mrs. Corrick to design a retirement home for him at 2 Atlantic Avenue. Both a registered architect and a licensed builder. I have 30 years' experience in flood plain construction, which we are in a B-zone here, elevation 21. So, a little background, Peter Rowdy went over it. He talks twice as fast as me. But we, as is always, whenever we start a project that is an existing house, we start by analyzing what's there, to see if we'll work with what's there or what's not. So, that's how we, that's how we began. And I was hired quite a while ago, and the plan was to do this at our leisure. I don't want to let, I say leisure, but at a relaxed pace, and, you know, have some fun with it. In the meantime, as Peter said, Dr. Corrick has diagnosed with Parkinson's, and now it's become more of a pressing issue to get this retirement home built, and he'll be coming here to stay. And so, a couple of things changed. We now need to make this home fully handicap accessible. And while I, while we were measuring the existing, we found copious amounts of mold, which we had analyzed in a lab, and they came up to be zero tolerance species, thousands, a thousand times over the acceptable, well, zero tolerance, there's no acceptable amounts, and there were some other ones that were high. It's a, the existing house is a drive-under garage type of arrangement with a basement, and the walls are constantly wet, and, or the prevailing winds come over the west, so they're either coming over the ocean or over, over the pond, which is a pond, and very moist air, which condenses on these walls. So, it wasn't so much the remediation of what was there, but the task of trying to build that space so that it wouldn't stay moldy again. It's where all the mechanical storage, don't necessarily use the garage so much to drive the car, but more storage. So, that coupled with the diagnosis, we started looking at what it would cost to upgrade this structure, and of course, we ran into the 50% rule of flood plains, which is in the building code, that if you're going to spend 50% or more of the value of the structure, not the land in the structure, you need to come up to code, which in this case, 100% of code, which in this play, case was a V-zone, a velocity zone. So, I like to think of this, you know, I think we're here tonight for a finding to see if we're substantially, we're not more substantially detrimental. I actually think this is better for the neighborhood, because, quite frankly, this is the future. This is where all these flood plain houses will end up one day, when you have to do a substantial improvement. For instance, you start with evaluation of the structure, which I believe the town has it at $244,000. 50% of that is what, 120? That doesn't go as far as it used to, as you may know. So, there's also challenges with a handicap home in a flood plain. As you can imagine, that whole first, from grade up to the lowest structural member that's allowed, all has to be breakaway. So, when the storm comes through, that just washes away with it. So, we've, we then made the decision that we'll have to demolish and start new, based on that 25% rule. The house just wouldn't be conducive to trying to lift up. on that 25% rule, the house just wouldn't be conducive to trying to lift up and put on piers. And it is a B-zone, remember, not an A, we're not just worried about the level of water, we're worried about the velocity and the wave action knocking the structure over. So, we've, we learned very quickly that we could stay within all the existing dimensional regulations for current zoning, all the setbacks, lock coverage, height, so we're looking for no relief, we're just here for this finding tonight. This drawing is in your packet, I just put a little color on it, what this shows here is that the buildable areas in green and the shaded area is the structure we're proposing. Now what's interesting about this, your, your regulation asks for the, for lock coverage, the area at grade, at ground level, whereas in a flood plane house at ground level, we're only in this white area, which is 200 square feet, but that'd be a bit misleading, so this is that gray area at ground level, and our lock coverage is just under 32%, which, with a corner lot, I believe you allow 65, so, we meet the lock coverage, the setbacks, which we applied 25 feet to both sides, both the west and the south, because it's a corner lot, it's on the corner of Holland and Atlantic, as you probably know, and this green space is just area that we didn't use within the buildable area. So, the entrance to the lot will remain the same, if you look at the homes on Atlantic, many of them have built retaining walls, because it slopes up pretty steep immediately, it slopes up about three feet, right, right off the back from the street, so they built these stone retaining walls, and which allows you to drive in and then some houses drive under into the garage. So we're gonna keep that existing driveway and entrance off Atlantic, only instead of driving into a garage area, you'll just be driving under the house, within the piers. So what you're seeing here is this white area, this T-section, this square with an X door, that will be an elevator, so that when you're driving at that level, you'll be able to get onto an elevator and up into your house, because that is at about elevation 11, and the first floor is at 24, so it's quite a distance up. Now, current regulations only allow you to build 10% at grade, at ground level, so that's that little T-section, and so, we meet that code. As far as the massing goes... You have these drawings in your packet, these are the elevations, we've used a simple traditional building form, with very traditional massing that emphasizes the horizontals rather than the verticals, because this is like taking your house and lifting it up eight feet, and starting eight feet above the ground. The flood plain there calls for elevation 21, but the building code then tells you you need two feet of freeboard, they call it, so you can't build to 21, you gotta build to 23, and in that, in a B-zone, it's the bottom of your lowest structural member, not your floor level. So that's, what you'll see, the base flood elevation is 21, however, a lower structural member needs to be set at 23, what you'll see here. So, we've used traditional forms with a four-pitch hip roof, the choice for hip roof was it addresses both Atlantic and Holland the same, so that it will de-emphasize the height of the gable, then again. So, we've, we've kept it to two, you know, standard height, living levels, with a four-pitch roof, four-pitch hip roof, and what's required by code underneath, so you can see what's there.
Looks like you have like eight, eight feet of column?
Yeah, so, the house slopes at, the site slopes at 6% from front to back, and what that means is over the house, it slopes from about 15 to 18, so it's about three feet. So, in, the worst-case scenario is, is what I show with the dimensions, and that's where you have elevation 15, so 15 to 23 is what, eight feet? So it's, it's about eight feet from, from there to the bottom of the lowest structural member.
Yeah, and that's at the...
Where the structure begins.
That would be at the lowest point?
That's on the south side.
That's on the south side.
The north side, if it slopes up two and a half feet about, it would be, what, five and a half?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, in the back, and that's why it looks less severe from the rear. So, the footprint I show incorporates all decks into that footprint, and what we did is, we, the second floor steps in then again, so that decks surround the house on all three, on three sides, southeast and west, no decks on the north, and on the second level, we chop the wings off, if you will, and it goes to just deck. So as the house goes up, it steps in, which again, de-emphasizes the verticality of the house.
But the roof goes out and covers...
The deck.
The deck.
On the seven-foot side, it doesn't make it over the 12-foot side, there are broad overhangs on this house. So, the house, what you gotta remember about living in a flood plane house, is that you can't do anything on that grade level, except make entry, there's no mechanicals, there's no storage, there's no nothing, you can just get in and get up, so you lose all that space. So, you have to make up for that in the floor plan, you have to get everything up above the floor plan, the condensers, for your air conditioning, everything. So, there's extras room needed in these houses in the floor plans, for all your mechanicals, anything you might store, you know, even your bicycle or whatever, you gotta bring it up, really, you're really, you know, you're not supposed to keep it on that ground level that would break away in that 100-year storm. You know, these are designed for the frequency, there's a 1% chance it comes every year, you could get three in one year, but, so, you gotta remember that, so that, you have to build more space into your floor plan for that, and that coupled with the handicap accessibility, which, you know, for example, you know, a three-foot-six hallway in a house becomes five feet, if you're gonna be totally handicap accessible, where you can spin a radius in a wheelchair, same goes in front of a vanity in a bathroom, or space around a bed or in front of a dresser. So, really, that's, that's the only increase, the house got, the house got larger for those reasons, due to the handicap design and storage and mechanical, which can no longer go in the basement.
How many bedrooms in this?
Four, the, the existing has four, the proposed has four, and it passed the Title V.
It's new construction, they're doing new stuff, they're building, they're doing new stuff, that means not a concern.
That's our concern.
Yeah, so, we're addressing that issue, but we're not, we're not asking to increase bedrooms, and we've passed the Title V, I think the only thing in question right now is the nitrate, other than that, we'd be home free, but the nitrate rules.
Right, I mean, we did give a little note, but again, that's, that's, that's between you and the health department.
Right, but that's the only, if, if it wasn't for the nitrate system, because it is a relatively new system, or...
Okay.
And what's interesting about these houses, what I was getting at, as you talk about lock coverage, but actually you get a lot more pervious surface with these flood plane houses, because...
Yes, because everything's underneath it, everything can...
Right.
Right. This is one, obviously, that I could drive by, Atlantic Avenue is pretty obvious, there are all the houses, obviously, that are, that have, that have already...
Been raised.
Had, have been raised, you know, for the same reason you're doing this one, so, it certainly, you know, I agree, that's, that's, in that area, that's gonna be something that all the, the houses are gonna have to think about at some point, but, you know, that's... And again, and I, and I want to reiterate, for, you know, this, not more detrimental to the neighborhood primarily has to do with, with safety and traffic and things like that, we do look at this, just, you know, just to make sure you're, you know, you're doing everything properly, but you're not really changing, your, your parking is going to be the same as it is now?
Actually, that's almost, it'll be identical, because we're keeping the same driveway, the only difference is, is that the garage will no longer be enclosed, but the area where you park where the garage was will still be there.
So you're gonna park under the house?
Under the house, right, we're not closing any parking and breakaway walls.
Right, right, right.
We could, but it's a decision that we chose not to.
Now, is this a factor, is the, how high is the house when all is said and done?
So the house, I, I always show the worst-case scenario on the plan, because as you know, for building height, you can take the average height, which is, if a, if a, if land slopes, that means it could be actually higher in the back, but the maximum height at, that you could measure it at any point would be 39.6, and the average height would be more like 37, to the peak.
Doesn't exceed 40?
Does not exceed 40.
Okay.
Don't go short of that. It's about a 30-foot hu, it's about a 30-foot tall house of eight feet, is the bottom line, that's what it is.
So when this is, gonna require you to essentially demolish what's there entirely?
Yes.
And start from scratch?
Yes, yeah, we're not gonna try to lift that structure.
Well, right, I mean, but you're not even trying to save any, it's just all gone.
It's gone.
Okay. So you need a demolishing permit?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, again, a building...
We submitted for, Ralph had to submit for a full building permit with all plans, and then we got the letter back stating that we need to come here for a finding.
Yes, right.
And that's, that's where we stood.
Yes, yeah. All right, thank you. Nice, I mean, this is a pretty substantial project.
Yes.
Yes, how long do you figure this is gonna take you?
A year.
A year, yeah, yes, well, because you really got two jobs, a tear-down and a put-up.
A tear-down, a put-up, the foundation take, it takes you longer to, it's gonna take longer to get out of the ground here than normal, both because of the demolition and the pier construction.
Pier construction.
And the foundation.
Right, right.
It has witnesses a year.
Times of the essence.
It's also, it's also part of public record now.
I always see it, it's going a year around there.
Any questions from the board?
No.
No, I think it looks good.
Any comments from, from the audience? Come up and name the address?
My name is Paul O'Connor, with my wife, we own 278 Holland Road, which is, which is immediately north, we share the backboard. Currently, we use the house as a summer home, and my wife, after 40 years of working at Boston Children's Hospital, taking care of kids with cancer, is finally retiring, and as of next year, we're planning to become, the Westport House is our primary residence. We do have some concerns with the, with the project itself, and if I could pass these out to the board, and also, I've got a few copies here, one of the concerns is that during the winter, when it's, the sun's at its lowest, I think the...
Oops, sorry.
I got another one for you, it went through.
Blocking our, our house.
Go ahead, what were you saying?
Could you repeat what you just said?
Well, one of the concerns I've got is that in the, in the late, in the beginning of winter, when the sun is at the lowest, what I've shown here is, this is the existing house, and the height I had is 40 feet, it's close to that, and, but it's also 10 feet closer to our property. So, and this picture was taken in the third week of January, so the sun is actually lower in the sky, even then, and our concern is that we don't want to live in the shadow.
Is this, you, you had come by a couple months ago, right?
Yeah.
I mean, unfortunately, I think it's not our rules that is going on in stealth, so, that's not us, so I don't think there's anything to do.
View is not something that we take into consideration here, our considerations are more objective, what you can measure, height, distance, so, we really can't expect a change just based on that.
Right, okay.
I feel for you, but...
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna have to go, you're gonna have to go up in stealth eventually too, so...
We don't plan ever changing the house. It was the house I grew up in, and...
Well, if you do it, do it, do it 20% of the time.
Possibly.
Well, we're almost up to the 100-year storm again, so...
Did you have another consideration?
Um, no, no.
Okay.
I mean, I guess, maybe I should say something, you know, you can talk to your neighbors about if they wanna make any changes to their design, but it's not...
But it's not mandated.
There really is no bylaw for, for you.
Yeah, I just considered living in the shadows to be a city, like not a Westport town.
Right, thank you, and thank you for your wife's work.
Definitely.
Can I address that?
Yes.
Yes.
Because I think you might feel better with what I have to say, because that is a good concern, I, I come to a lot of these meetings and I hear crazy concerns, but, but you know, one of them is, you know, blocking the sun, as you know, that's why tall buildings step back in the city and whatnot.
So you're gonna make the second floor invisible, right?
Well, a couple of things, one is...
Build glass.
One is the hip roof, so if you were to look to see here, that's a very small profile, that would even approach 4 feet, these triangles are huge for this issue you're talking about. The other one is, is I disagree that it's getting 10 feet closer to your property, let me, here's where we could build to, this reach, we could build back to that line, we're, we're 27 feet forward of the property line, technically, we could build within six feet, because that's considered our rear, we're building to 27, I think you should feel really good about that, 27 is a lot better than six. As far as, so, the worst day of the year is gonna be December 21st, you know, winter solstice, that's when the sun, when it's due south, will be about 17 degrees in the sky, however, it drops pretty quick from there, those days are so short, so, I would be willing to bet, I might do in my head, the 17 degrees being the 27 feet back, and I believe, I believe you took again to the six-foot setback, because your address is on Holland, not this side, right?
Our address is Holland, yeah.
Yeah, you built within six, I think, under deck, going, going back on the east, right here. But given the distance between your property and ours, this is how big a footprint will get, we're not gonna put you in shade, very good concern, but I, I think, I've done a lot of, of solo work, figuring out solar windows, overhangs, and you're gonna be okay. It's a good concern, but I think it's good news, and, we're 27 feet back, you know, we're 27 feet away from your line, and we're not getting any closer, that was the only thing you said that wasn't correct up here.
Well, what I took was the house that exists currently, and the ridge line will come closer to us by 10 feet.
Now, I disagree. Maybe a little bit, but, and again, the hip roof's the key, the kids roof's the key, let's say you were in shade, it would maybe be for 10 minutes to two weeks, I don't think you will though at all.
Okay, thank you.
How high is the existing house, I'm just curious, I know it doesn't have the eight-foot...
Well, the existing house in the front would be about 27, 26, it's like a 25-foot house, and then you got the slope to the left.
But, and it's, and I can, I know the house, I live near there, it's boxy.
Yeah, it's a, the, the ridge runs parallel with Atlantic.
Right.
But that's, it's huge, that hip roof is huge, because it takes those two triangles out, that would, you won't be shaved.
I guess the other question I have, I don't know if I need to approach the...
Yes, they can't hear you on...
I just saw this on the, on the building plans today, my other concern is...
By the way, you called my office, you left a message with no phone number, I scrambled, I don't have, that, that, that phone doesn't have caller ID, I called them to try to get your number, I, all I could get is that you lived in Dedham, I tried to track you down, I couldn't, but you didn't leave your number, you need to do that... You need to do that next time. I would've called you.
I saw on the new plans, a, a propane tank?
Yes.
Is that just gonna be sitting out in the open, or is it gonna be screened, or?
I, I, it's gonna be chained down, because it's in a flood plain, but that would be a question for... We might paint it like a cowl, like coming... I would, would you close in your, 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 you wouldn't see it. Okay, that would, yeah, that would be...
I don't wanna see it either.
A little more, please. You don't want the cow?
Any other comments? I have no other comments. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Record shows unanimous. So at this point, we'll deliberate and render a decision. Once again, I, I think this is gonna be good for the neighborhood.
Yeah, I like the fact that the driveway is in the same spot, so people, the cars are in the same spot.
From a safety standpoint, it doesn't affect anybody. From a, from a traffic standpoint, it doesn't affect anybody. Putting it on stilts is something that everybody's gonna have to get used to, that live in a flood zone. It's not our requirement, it's a state requirement, and there's nothing we can do about it. That's just the law. You know, I think it's gonna be a good-looking structure, although there's nothing certainly wrong with, in this particular case, the house that's there.
Yeah.
Except it's full of mold.
That's a problem.
Any other comments? Okay, entertain a motion.
Constance, you did so well on the last one.
I did, okay, now I've gotta find it, so I can read.
Do it, Constance.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ray.
I'll make a motion to approve the findings for Dr. Carrick and Elizabeth Carrick. That demolition of the existing non-conformant structure and new construction of a single-family dwelling in compliance with a setback in flood zone requirements shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformant use to the neighborhood as mandated by zoning bylaw, Article Five, Section Five, Point Two, Point Three. Subject property is located at Two Atlantic Avenue, Westport, Mass., and is shown on assessors map eighty-eight Lot forty-three, and in compliance with the plans submitted to date.
Very good, Ray. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. There is a twenty, a twenty-day wait period, so don't start knocking it down too soon.
Dick didn't listen for the tier.
So you plan, that's gonna be your, your, your year-round residence now?
We think so, yeah.
Very good.
And a year from now.
A year from now. Year from now. Thank you very much.
And Maria, you owe me a good little letter from Ralph there.
I might have to sit down.
Okay, next tour of business is the meeting minutes from December seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Maria sent this out. I reviewed it and commented on it. I will make a motion to approve the...
Good luck to you.
The meeting minutes from December seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved, so, okay, I gotta sign this. Get this out of the way. The other good news to note is Maria is now officially the zoning board administrator.
Almost the town meeting repeals me.
Yeah, you have to go in front of the town meeting.
Don't worry.
As all things would have to, but...
I'm not a resident, so I can't appear. It was probably a good thing.
But it's, it's, well, it's been really a long thing. It's something that the zoning board should've done years and years ago. That position has always been more than a clerk job. And it, it's been Maria that has brought it...
It's a good thing I suggested it.
Excuse me?
I said, "It's a good thing I suggested it, Ben."
Yes. It certainly is. So, you know, after months of, of, you know, of work to get this through, it was finally approved last night. So, and that's, and that's good for the board because, you know, Maria's doing an outstanding job at it, but she isn't gonna be, none of us will be here forever. But the position is something that... Jerry will be here forever, yeah. But, but the position is something that, that really needed to be, to be really ironed out. And Maria did a lot of work on that, identifying all the things that are required from that position and all the things that she actually does for us now, so.
Yeah, thank you.
So that, there are a couple of notices. The plans for the planning board. Neither of these, I think, one of them is a site plan approval for low-impact developments at Stonebridge, which is something that we don't usually get involved in site plan approval. So I would recommend that we just, no comment on this. Anybody have an issue with that? If anybody, you can look at it if you want.
So what is that actually, just...
It's, okay, comments and recommendations regarding application for a special permit for independent living facility in site plan approval, low-impact development for Stonebridge, our private community at Mellow's Way and Cabot Street.
That's up near Tickle Road. I was on that today.
Oh, yeah.
Cabot Street.
Okay.
There's already a lot of...
There's a lot of, there's a lot going on with this.
They were heard before, I think, the meeting. Or during the meeting, when I was watching it, and it, like, everybody's, yes.
Oh, that's the one, that everybody talked about. Yes, yes.
On traffic, and small children, or the old folks, or I don't know. Yeah.
But that's gotta go in front of a whole bunch of boards.
There's a lot of water issues down here, too.
The second one is comments and recommendations regarding special permit for flexible frontage request approval to reduce otherwise applicable front requirements on a public wagon in exchange for a corresponding reduction in development density in the direction of a common driveway. Essentially, that's, essentially, what this is mostly about, is a common driveway off of Main Road. If anybody wants to look at this, you're welcome to.
Is that a specific one case?
Yes, this is one case.
But it's not gonna come up before us?
No, this is not something that comes before us. This is, the planning board usually looks in, we, we don't usually look into common driveway access as a, as a zoning. It just doesn't come to us. So again, I would recommend that we just identify there's no comment. The issue with that. You wanna just file that in?
That's contagious. We need to keep you awake, Cindy.
It was a dentist today, and I was waking out.
I, I was hoping that we could talk about the, the update to the, to our rules and regulations, but it's not on the agenda, so, so we really can't. I have made, requested, most of the changes that I put in were mostly, some of them were just moving things to the right place. Some of it, we, we never really talked about what happens after the first petition. You know, like tonight, there is other petitions, and then there's other work. And so I added pieces on that. I also included a couple of areas where we, where I thought that, that, that we could, at majority vote, agree to things like who gets to vote on things, and, you know, so there's some procedural things that, that I thought were relevant. However, like I said, we really can't go into a lot of... What I'd like to do, though, is, and I made a second version in advance of last night's meeting, to change the, the zoning board clerk to the zoning, zoning board administrator. So what I will do then is I will, again, send this back up. I think what I'll do, though, I mean, when I read this, because I sent everybody a copy of, I assume you get something like that, that you can see what the changes were. The problem with that is sometimes it's hard to read when you see, is this in, is it out? So what I'll do is I will resend it as is, and I will resend it with all the changes accepted, so that then you can read it and see how it's gonna flow. Because some things are cut out, and some things are pasted in. So sometimes being able to read it from front to back makes a lot more sense. You're not saying...
You can do that automatically?
I know, you hit a button.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, that's how you accept changes. You've been saying you don't wanna see any of the markups.
Yes, right.
So you don't, you don't have to do any...
I don't have to do the same changes, I can do, you're right.
But Jerry might not be able to figure that one out.
No, that's why I'm gonna just...
I might not be able to either.
No, that's why I'm gonna send one that's clear.
I don't think I would either.
You can read it. So that, so anyway, you're gonna have to hold that off...
We're gonna have a little less than four hours, okay?
...to a, a subsequent meeting, which I may or may not be out. And you all know what's going on. I tendered my resignation. At the moment, the zoning, the select board has not approved the, the, my, my resignation. And so that's still in the air. And I've tried to contact the select board to see if there is some, what I call, putting humpy-dumpy back together again. They haven't responded. I requested that we get on, that I get on the select board agenda. They haven't responded. So my last attempt is I'm gonna write them a letter and hope that they read it. And then we'll go from there. So I, I may not, I may or may not, this may be my last theory.
I don't know if I can ask during this meeting, but which way would you like it to go? And if you don't wanna answer that, don't answer that.
I, I'm perfect, if, I'm, I really like this group of, of zoning board members. I, what's, what, to me is really impressive is, is everybody thinks about things in a different way, and that's really important for this kind of a job. You don't want five clones. You want five independent thinkers, and I think, and I think you'll look around, and, and everybody has good comments, and they're different comments, and they are different perspectives. And I, and I really appreciate that, because I tend to look at things very logically. I'm an engineer. I think of facts and figures, and that's not always the case. So I, I really enjoy working with, with, with the group, and I would, if asked, I would remain as, not on the board as chair. And even if they don't, you know, you know, agree to my resignation, my tenure ends in June anyway. So that's, but that's neither here nor there, so. Our next meeting is...
I'm scheduling something for March twenty-ninth.
March twenty-ninth.
You know, Constance had already said she's not gonna be here.
Yeah, I'm probably not gonna be here.
I'm gonna be gone the last week of April, so I can't really schedule anything too close to that if I'm going to have to follow a decision.
Right.
And I won't be here, so... Then I have the sixty-five days that I have to, within which to schedule some...
March twenty-ninth.
...string.
Just in case.
And that one's an accessory apartment, detached accessory apartment, so.
Okay.
I don't think it's too complicated.
Uh, any other business that, that anybody wants to discuss before we, before I let Barbara take over?
Ralph had left me a message. I probably should've said something sooner, but he had a medical issue with his mom.
Oh, okay, yes, right. Okay, Barbara?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor, have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.